All right. Good afternoon. My name is Brianna Bobo and I am the Chair for the City of St. Louis Charter Commission. I am pleased to call this second June by monthly meeting of our Charter Commission organized for and on behalf of the City of St. Louis. The time is now four forty PM. We welcome members of the public who have joined us virtually as well. And with that, we will have roll call and approval of meeting minutes by Secretary Tagliata.
Okay, so I'll call the roll right now. Please say present or here when called. Chair Bobo?
Here.
Vice Chair Sheridan?
Here.
Parliamentarian Garth? Commissioner Crossland? Commissioner Dwight?
Present.
Commissioner Grant?
Present.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Present.
Commissioner Riley?
Present.
And Secretary Tagliata present. That is seven of nine chair. And let me call our non-commissioners. The Director Milberg?
Present.
The Director Ingrasha?
Present.
Counselor Hamilton?
Present.
Very good. Alder Alderman Volmer? Just a second. Controller Designee Nadric Tankins?
Present.
Thank you. And Director Gray, so Jenkins Gray?
Present.
Thank you. All right. Very good.
Thank you, Secretary Tagliata. So draft meeting minutes from previous meetings held at the tail end of May and then our first two meetings of June, which were June third and tenth are part of the meeting packet on the Charter Commission's webpage. And also available for review in the Google Drive. I now recognize Secretary Tagliata again for a motion regarding approval of these minutes.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from all three meetings.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. I'll call roll. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
The Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Parliamentarian Garth? Commissioner Crossland? You're muted, Anna.
Yep, I'm present.
The, uh, thank you. We're voting, uh, we're voting on the, uh, the minutes from our past three meetings, Anna.
Yep. Sorry about that.
No problem. Good. Uh, would, uh, and the motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. The, would you care to vote, Anna?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols? Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Secretary Tagliata, aye. That's a seven of nine chair.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So our next agenda item is discussion regarding draft amendments published for the public hearing. Um, the Charter Commission issued a press release attaching our commission's initial drafts of proposed charter amendments this past Friday, which was the fourteenth. Uh, the press release is prominently displayed on the commission's webpage under the subtitle "Commission Documents." And that gives members of the public full access. You can review and read what we've pulled together thus far. Um, and the commission invites members of the public then to join in on our next and potentially final public hearing on July one to provide commentary on these drafts, give input. Um, and then the commission will finalize the time and location for the July one meeting tonight, um, which is the next agenda item. Um, and so what I'm going to do quickly, just to keep everyone kind of aware of where we are and provide some context, I'm going to give a little bit of a summary review. Um, and then we can move into, uh, the next order of business. So, um, essentially the commission held its first meeting nearly three hundred days ago. If you can, um, think back that far on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, shortly after say into three working groups or work groups to hear presentations, um, from experts. Those in the community, of course. Then the commission held several, uh, special meetings to hear from community organizations. Uh, like the St. Louis Association of Community Organizations and the League of Women Voters. Um, we also heard from a variety of experts like professor, professor of sociology and demography at St. Louis University, Dr. Ness Sandoval, um, a few folks from UMSO, um, a professor of public administration and government, and the National Civic League President Doug Linkard. So again, this commission held two public hearings, one at the Missouri History Museum, and then one at the International Institute of St. Louis. Um, and then once we were able to coalesce all of the work group recommendations made, um, the commission began to meet, um, twice per month instead of once per month as a full body. Um, and just last Monday, we voted to prioritize seven, um, of the proposed charter amendment options for drafting by the city councilor's office. Um, and really quick, a point of, um, just sincere gratitude to the city councilor's office for, um, supporting, supporting our process up into this point and helping us with the draft language. We really appreciate it. Um, and so the city councilor's office has worked to create drafts, um, which were attached to that press release that I mentioned earlier. Um, and then with our July one public hearing, this commission will have convened a total of sixty times in forums open to the public and some not, um, some parts were closed, for example. Um, between now and the public hearing, the city councilor's office will continue to provide legal advice and recommendations on these drafts. Um, and then this commission will hold what is likely going to be our final meeting um, on July eighth, just that we can have everything bundled up and pulled together for the Board of Aldermen. Uh, the Board of Aldermen will then, uh, then are the next step, they will hold, uh, some special meetings regarding our proposed amendments with an eye towards the August deadline. So with that, um, I'm going to recognize each member of the commission, starting with um, proponents of proposed amendments. If we have any requests for legal advice, we have reserved space for a, a separate closed session and we can do that at that point. So when I call your name, if you'd like to have anything discussed, uh, specifically on the in the space of legal advice, we can do a closed session. Um, I do see a hand raised. Director Ingrasha, I recognize you to speak.
Thank you, Chair Bobo. Um, I, I'm happy to talk about this now or after you have this discussion, but I did want to let you know I have some definitive dates for um, how we're assuming the uh, legislation on the charter recommendations will move through the Board of Aldermen. So if people are interested in that, happy to talk about that now or, or wait. I just didn't want to fail to mention it on the heels of what you just said in terms of timeline.
I, I feel like, let's see. I feel like that's relevant to the conversation we're having now. Um, certainly we will have a discussion later on in the agenda just about our next public meeting, but I think if you would, uh, be so kind as to share those dates with us, just that we have that level of awareness.
Sure. Yep. Thank you so much. Um, so as you know, uh, we're assuming that the legislation will be introduced July twelfth at the full board meeting. At that time, it's first read and assigned to committee. Um, we have a commitment from Chair Volmer of the Legislation Committee to hear um, the legislation in his committee at two PM on July twenty-third. Um, then, uh, we're assuming there's going to be more than one meeting, but that we do have, we'll see where we are at that point. And then the full board will meet on Thursday, August eighth at ten AM um, to hopefully second read and perfect, uh, suspend the rules to perfect the legislation. And then they meet again on August sixteenth. That's a Friday at ten AM to hopefully third read and finally pass the legislation and send it to the mayor. I'm happy to take questions if anyone has them.
Commissioner Crossland, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, just to, just, um, Director Ingrasha, if you could clarify, are there any points in these meeting processes where there is value in having any of the commissioners who were involved in, um, in developing language, et cetera, uh, for these various options, um, available to be able to answer questions or speak or whatever?
I think that's a great question. I would definitely encourage, um, the commissioners to work together to figure out a strategy for, uh, either public or written testimony at, uh, the very least at that July twenty-third, two PM hearing and legislation. We only hear public testimony during committee hearings. There's um, no availability to speak or, um, at, at full board meetings, but you're always welcome to submit written, um, testimony to the board before those meetings.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes. Um, Commissioner Tagliata?
Uh, yes, uh, Director, the Ingrasha, could you, uh, provide, uh, those dates and, and times in writing for us?
Sure. I'll make sure the Charter Commission, um, staff receives those so they can be disseminated to all the members of the commission.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Are there any other questions or comments specifically about that for Director Ingrasha? Okay. Thank you, Director Ingrasha. I appreciate that. Um, so what we're going to do, just as, uh, before Director Ingrasha spoke, I mentioned we have space right now for closed session for legal advice if needed. So, um, all I'm going to do is call your name. If you have a question that, that we need to go into a closed session for, now is your, your time to shine. Um, but otherwise we can just keep moving forward. So, um, I will start with Commissioner Grant.
Who, is that for me? I'm sorry?
Yes, Commissioner Grant.
No, I don't have any, um, questions that would require going into closed session.
Okay. Um, okay. So next, um, Secretary Tagliata?
No, no, thank you.
Commissioner Crossland? Okay. Um, Vice Chair Sheridan?
No, thank you.
Um, Parliamentarian Garth? I don't know if I saw him on.
He's not on.
Okay. Commissioner Dwight?
I don't know.
Commissioner Nolan Echols? And Commissioner Riley?
I'm hesitating because we don't know what we don't know. And so I'm going to say yes, if we can, uh, that could be helpful.
Okay. And we can also, I mean, at this time, if, if we need to just open the floor for preliminary comments on the drafts up to this point, that's, that can be done in, in an open session. It's just specifically, uh, the legal part. If there were like questions about legalities of things that we pulled together, that would need to be closed. But if you would, if, if anyone at this point, um, wanted to just talk about preliminary comments on the drafts at this point, you can do that, or if you have questions. I'm going to hold space just for a few more moments in case, um, anyone I've called wants to say anything. And if not, I will go to the ex-officio members because we'd also like to hear from them if, if they have something um, specific legal advice that they'd like to draw upon right now. Um, Director Casey Milberg?
No, thank you.
Okay. Special Assistant Nadric Tinkins?
No comment from me.
Okay, thank you. Um, Director Christine Ingrasha?
No, thanks for asking.
City Councilor, uh, Hamilton, do you, do you have any questions or legal advice that you need?
No, thank you.
Uh, Director Sonia Gray?
Of course I do. No, I'm just teasing. No, I don't. Nothing at all.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Jay Comel, I don't know that I saw him on. Okay. So before we move on, I just want to make sure, has everyone, does everyone feel like they don't need necessarily legal advice at this moment? Okay. Thank you very much. We will now move.
I'll just, I'll just say you all know how to reach me and, um, and you do, and you do whenever you need to. So feel free to reach out. Um, as you are reviewing these drafts, if you have any, um, comments, questions for us, things you want us to look into.
Thank you very much. Um, so we're now on agenda item four, which is discussion regarding July one public hearing. Um, and I'm going to yield the floor to Vice Chair Sheridan and also Commissioner Dwight, who I know have been, um, very interested in, in making sure that we have obviously these public hearings, of course, as are all of us, but really ensuring that we're in different places in the community. Um, and I do have word from the Charter Commission staff that space has been reserved at the Dutch Town Neighborhood Innovation Center. Um, and that would be, you know, if, if we couldn't, if we didn't want to do that, another option is they've also reserved the Kennedy Hearing Room, which is where we typically have our, um, commission meetings as a backup. Um, and we have that tentatively planned for a start time of seven PM, um, consistent with all other prior Charter Commission public hearings. So I will yield the floor to Vice Chair Sheridan and Commissioner Dwight. Um, as you discuss finalizing the time, location and format and any other details.
It looks like, uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols has a question first, so I'd like to recognize her before, uh, we jump forward.
Very well.
Thank you. I recall, I'm sorry, I'm going back through my notes. I recall us having voted on the last public hearing being held at a different and diversified location. We've had all of our public hearings to at least in the same South St. Louis area and location. I have requested and we voted on previously for the final public hearing to be held in and or around North St. Louis. It sounds to me like we went back to South St. Louis. And I want to know why that has occurred and for what reasons do we need to have all of the engagement related to this commission in South St. Louis?
I, uh, thank you for that. I also remember that, uh, is being part of our discussion and formal direction. Have, have we talked about, are there other, are there options for North St. Louis locations that have been surfaced or vetted or considered?
Yes, they have. They were identified by the Charter Commission staff and Shannon Hamilton when I rose this concern. And when we voted on it and discussed it as a commission, she had already previously identified the locations that would work and we agreed to go there prioritizing that location. In the event that it was not available, which it was already available, we would go to a South St. Louis location. But it sounds to me like we've omitted that decision. We've omitted North St. Louis being a final destination for our public hearing.
I would like the meeting to take place, so the public hearing to take place in North St. Louis also, I, um, as a fourteenth ward representative and resident, uh, old north resident or North St. Louis resident, I would, I would, I would prefer that, uh, as an opportunity. Uh, Counselor Hamilton, are there, uh, do we know if any of these spaces that we had on the list are available or not available at that time?
I'm sorry, my internet connection is poor and so it went out for a second. Um, but I do see that my staff are messaging me and saying that the O'Fallon Y was checked for availability and they were not available on, um, the July first date that you all selected. Was there another, something that I was supposed to be, um, that I did not hear that you brought up as another location?
We were just, uh, uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols had mentioned that there were a number, a couple of locations in North St. Louis that were going to be considered. Uh, and if they were not available, then we would, uh, go to South St. Louis again. It sounds like we have a, a location in, uh, somebody said Dutch Town. But we are curious as to, uh, the opportunity to have this last public hearing in North St. Louis if possible. Are there other locations besides the O'Fallon Y?
This is Eddie Roth. The only north side location that was identified for the staff to look at by the commission was the O'Fallon Y, which had been available before, but it was not available on July first. And the action taken by the commission was that if the O'Fallon Y is not available, look at Dutch Town because it carries the, the kind of diversity that would be worth pursuing as well. And that's where I focused my efforts and contacted the Aldermen for the best location, his judgment. And, uh, that's where the Neighborhood Innovation Center, uh, in Dutch Town was, uh, his recommendation and they are available and, uh, ready to accommodate us.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners have thoughts?
I have a question. Um, is it too late to consider other venues in, um, North St. Louis if they can be identified and reached within the next, say, for example, within the next day or so? Uh, what comes to mind is Better Family Life, uh, as an option. Um, the mayor had her, um, community, uh, cabinet and community meeting there, and so it holds quite a few people, um, at that location. Um, and there may be one or two more.
We are hap- We are happy to research any locations you would like. In, with this hearing, we were following your prior instructions.
Understood. Yes, we have one, uh, option is Better Family Life. Other commissioners?
I also stated, uh, that there was a list of, I provided the Charter Commission staff with a list of locations in North St. Louis, where the public hearing could have been held.
And when I say, um, your prior instructions, I'm talking about the commission as a whole.
And the commission's prior instructions were, were to look at specifically O'Fallon Y. Understood. Commissioner Dwight?
Um, a few other options might be the Julia Davis Library, which is a branch on the north side near Fairground Park, um, that has a, a built, uh, I think their largest classroom can maybe support forty. Um, I've hosted events at Sumner High School before. Um, I've heard of some happening at Visham before. Um, and there's Central Print, um, which is in Old North, uh, which has a room that could accommodate auditorium style, uh, seating, probably about forty. Um, and I could, I could think about it. There, there are some others.
Yeah. Uh, one other option might be how, um, Harris Stowe University?
That is correct.
I don't know if that necessarily accomplishes moving north. It's still central corridor.
Okay.
I, I think that, I think the, the concern was having, uh, or the desire was to have something in North St. St. Louis. Uh, but that is, I think Harris Stowe is a, is a very nice venue and option. Other, other commissioners thoughts?
I see Director Ingrasha's hand raised.
Thank you, uh, Chair Bobo. I, I just wanted to mention, I don't disagree that having a meeting in North City, um, holds real value and probably is, you know, make sure that the public understands that the commission values the opinions of the people living there and working there. Um, to the extent, I think someone brought up the point, if, if we can find something pretty quickly, um, I would maybe try, and if you make a motion to move the meeting north, um, we do have to make sure, I mean, we're two weeks away now and the public has no notice really that this is going to happen. So if we want people to come, we need to let them know rather quickly. And then, um, if we want the public who's tuning in to be able to hear, we need to make sure that the IT capabilities of those locations are such that STLTV is able to um, carry the meeting so that everybody in the public who's tuning in on the stream is able to hear.
If that's the case, I would, I would think Julia Davis Library has, uh, has facilities that, that might accommodate, uh, be willing to, uh, be able to work. Commissioner Nolan Echols? I see your hand raised.
Thank you. I move that the July first public hearing is conducted at Julia Davis Public Library.
And do we want to, uh, uh, I, uh, before we, before that motion carries forward, do you want to offer an alternative or, uh, because I want to make sure that the commission staff, uh, have, have something to act upon if for some reason Julia Davis Library is not available?
Is the second location, the Dutch Town Center, what is the exact name?
Neighborhood Innovation Center.
Okay. So the Dutch Town Neighborhood Innov- Innovation Center. Repeat that for me again, Ingrasha.
That was Roth and it was innovation, the Neighborhood Innovation Center at Dutch Town.
So I amend my motion to state.
Excuse me, uh, uh, Commissioner Jasmine, just a suggestion in the motion. Uh, can the motion contain maybe two locations in North City in, in the event that the first one doesn't work? That there may be another option that the, uh, city council's office can, uh, look into. And then if nothing's available, then, uh, go to Dutch Town, just as a recommendation.
Agreed. So I will amend my motion to state I move that the July first public hearing is conducted at either Julia Davis Public Library, Sumner High School. And in the event that either of the two North St. Louis locations is not available, that the South St. Louis location of the Innovation Center be the location for the July first public hearing.
I would second that.
Okay. Uh, the motion has been made and seconded.
Uh, really quickly, um, Commissioner Tagliata, Commissioner Crossland, did you have a question or comment?
You're on mute.
Just, just a concern that, um, it being summer now, it's, it's my understanding, a lot, the public schools are going to be closed. And so our ability to be able to hold meetings there is, is much more limited than during the school year.
Could the motion then include instead of Sumner High School, uh, Better Family Life as a second location, second alternative?
Better Family Life is not quite North St. Louis. It's West St. Louis. However, I have a contact that I can identify at Sumner High School as well as Julia Davis Public Library in the event that the Charter Commission staff is not able to identify anyone within the notice that we have.
Hey, uh, the motion has been made and seconded uh, to support a series of possible venues in, in order. Um, please signify your agreement, uh, by voting aye. Uh, Chairwoman Bobo?
Uh, aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Uh, Parliamentarian Garth? Commissioner Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
And Secretary Tagliata, aye. The ayes have it, Chairwoman.
Thank you. So our next, um, agenda item is the discussion regarding our July eighth meeting, which I, you know, at this point, it looks like it's going to be a special meeting instead of a, a regular one. Um, and so I anticipate that we, we may need closed session for, um, legal advice. Um, however, do any of the other members of the commission have anything they would like to see added to a July eighth special meeting agenda at this time? Special meeting agenda at this time?
Just, uh, consideration of kind of the results from the hearing and if there are any specific adjustments that need to be made.
Okay. Let me write that down. Commissioner Crossland?
Um, I don't know whether this would be something for that meeting or for some. Time before we actually disperse as a group, but it would seem to me that we would want to. Put together a, a draft of observations or recommendations or something, just for the record of, um, some. Things that we have, uh, that we would recommend that they look at in drafting, um, uh, Charter Commit Reform Commission. Options in the future.
Okay, so that is an agenda item?
Well, it could be an agenda item for that meeting, or it could be something that we simply. I don't know, put, put, put our thoughts out on paper and send them all to you and you collect them or something and they be turned in. It doesn't have to be terribly. Um, uh, complex, but there should be an option at least for us to. Um, recognize, you know, um, uh, our observations, et cetera, and have them recorded somewhere for, for posterity.
For posterity sake? Okay, understood, okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right, thank you for that. Commissioner Grant, and then I'll go to Commissioner Nolan Echols and Commissioner Dwight.
Thanks. First off, I think Anna's idea is great, that we have some sort of final report. I don't know if that has to be done on the eighth, but, uh, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um. So my, my question is, uh. As far, a- a- and maybe I, uh, this is coming later in the meeting today, but. I, I just want to make sure I understand. Uh, so we're going to take this input from the public on July first and then meet on July eighth for essentially our final vote. Uh, to refer. What matters get placed or referred to the Board of Aldermen. And we're going to need to have a discussion. At some point about whether we are doing the measures that we refer all as one single ordinance. Or as multiple ordinances. Uh, and when we're going to do that. And I, I'd also have this concern. I, I had heard in the past that, so we're going to vote on July eighth and that an ordinance needs to be presented in form. To the board the next day. Uh, and I don't know if that's still true, g- given the new dates that, uh, Christine just mentioned, but if that is true. Uh, that's going to give us very, very little time. To, um. Modify any proposals. Based on the public input and vote on them. And I just would like to hear from. I guess the city councillor's office as to, to what. Uh, wh- wh- what, I mean, the pressures they're going to be under to get something done in less than twenty-four hours and what steps could be taken to. Ameliorate those problems by trying to get them. Uh, information before then. Before July eighth, which I don't know is feasible, but.
Mr. Grant, can I add to that? And to what extent can we modify what's sent to the board? Because we had to publish what will be sent to them, to the public. So we change it. Can we then send that to the board without having that published again for the public to review? So we may not be able to, to change anything. We can note what changes should be. To get that data to the board to consider for what they'll present as a final ordinance.
Councillor Hamilton, I know that you've mentioned that your internet was a little, um. Off, but did you hear that piece of it? And do you have any comment or, or thoughts? I don't know if she's still on.
Commissioner Bobo, I can probably help a little bit.
Okay.
City Councillor Hamilton returns. It's my understanding of the ordinance that the obligation to report to the public, there's a two week. Uh, period of time where you're to receive feedback. And then you have the authority to make changes to the recommendations that have been published based on that feedback. Um, so you are able to tweak those, um, within this two week timeframe. Um, and to Commissioner Grant's point, um, the, the only mechanism by which we could extend the time for the. Commission's recommendations to be introduced at the board outside of the rules that. Are required to be followed to have them come to the clerk by twelve PM on July ninth would be if it was introduced from the floor. Um, at the meeting on July ninth, but then you risk the, um, possibility of. Not enough aldermen voting in favor for that to happen. And so for all of those recommendations to not have the chance to be introduced at all. It's, I will say, it's not typical behavior. Typically, most alderpersons will vote for having something introduced. Um, regardless of the topic, but, uh. There is a possibility that it could be, that you wouldn't have the votes in order to move forward.
So, so, and that's because there's like a seventy-two hour rule?
The Board of Aldermen, yes, creates its own rules and, uh, anything that's to be introduced and, uh. For a Friday meeting has to be in at Tuesday by noon to the clerk of the board. You're muted, Commissioner Grant.
The two, two, so that's noon on Tuesday before the normal Friday board meeting, right? Okay.
Correct.
So that's an incredibly difficult. I mean, task to. We were going to be voting on the evening of July eighth. For something that will need to be presented by noon, July ninth. That's.
Are we looking to the date of July eighth for a meeting?
I think that date was chosen because of the July fourth holiday. If, if my memory serves me correctly, July first is the end of the two week period. And then you agreed to meet on July eighth. For the final vote.
And I'm, I'm back now. I'm sorry. I wasn't able to hear what was being previously said, but I'm present now.
Commissioners, uh, Grant and Riley, did, do you feel, uh? Like your questions were answered specifically about that? If not, we can. Okay, okay. And Commissioner Nolan Echols, did you have an additional comment or was that a question?
I do. I want to add the agenda, the feedback and recommendations from the public with the, from the July first public hearing.
I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner, uh, could you say, re-say that again, please?
The question on the floor was what would we like to add to the agenda for the July eighth meeting? And I would like to add discussion. From the July first meeting of the public's recommendations. Based on our published recommendation. And we've got that one down from Commissioner Dwight's earlier comments.
Yep.
Great. Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other, um, discussion needed around the agenda for the July eighth special meeting?
Well, so I, I'm just con- I'm very concerned, how do we get something drafted? Uh, for between July first and July eighth? Like when we don't vote. On July eighth. Uh, I, I mean, we're gonna, we have three, for instance, we have three proposals that have. Some inconsistencies with each other related to budgeting authority, E and A. And, um, the public advocate, we're going to have to pick one of those three, right?
Yeah, so I may, I may be able to help with that. I didn't hear all the comments before. I'm sorry, I've been having terrible trouble with the internet. Here, um, but our plan, the city councillor's office's plan is to meet again with the proponents. Of, uh, the various proposals between July first and July eighth. Um, and what we can do is take recommendations from those proponents. And also maybe do some variations, um, on language. I think, uh, between July first and July eighth. And so what does that mean? Um. It means that we're going to need the proponents to make themselves available to us. Um, between July first and July eighth. If there is a specific commissioner who is going to, who, who I, you know, you know. That based on a public hearing comment, you are going to put forward a motion on July eighth. That such and so forth, uh, change be made, then you, I would ask that you all reach out to the city councillor's office and, and to me and, and, and charter commission staff. Before July eighth, well before. Um, to have a meeting with us so that we can talk about what you want that language to look like and get those, uh, ready. So I, my recommendation would be, and you don't have to do it this way, is that everyone who plans to make a motion. Um, or put a motion on the table related to a language at all. Um, has a meeting scheduled with the charter commission staff, with the city councillor's office between July first and July eighth. If it would be helpful for you guys, we can send out a, a survey. A thing that we normally send so that you can book yourself for a meeting between July first and July eighth. And that way we can get it on the calendar right now. And we, you, if you decide, hey, I don't want to make a change, or I know Commissioner, uh, Dwight is already making that change. Or is already putting forward that motion and you, we can cancel that meeting and take it off the calendar. I'm sorry, I, I, I hope that's answering.
That's a, an excellent suggestion, uh, Councillor Hamilton. And I would encourage us. To get that poll and proactively schedule time each of us. And then you can always. Cancel it if there's nothing to move forward with, but ne- then it's at least on everybody's calendar and on the councillor's calendar.
I think that's a good plan of action. Um. Commissioner Crossland?
Yeah, um, I find myself wondering whether, if we're going to have this meeting on the first of July. Uh, would it make sense for us, um, to meet at four thirty on the second of July? Uh, by Zoom for an hour hopefully, and maybe, uh, uh, not longer. And, um, preliminarily vet the comments that have come up and. Um, eliminate those that we think, um, have already been discussed and need to be discarded with a rationale for them. Or to say, yes, this makes sense, let's look at incorporating it so that, but when we get to the eighth. We already have done that preliminary vetting at that point. And what we're looking at then is a smaller, more concentrated. Um, package of, of actual changes that might also help the councillor's office in terms of the number of options that they might have to draft.
All right.
Commissioner Grant? Oh, sorry. What were you saying, Commissioner Intagliata?
Anna, is that a motion you're making?
Um, I still move.
Second.
Okay.
What time are you proposing on July second?
At four thirty PM.
And this will be in lieu of us having individual meetings with the city councillors, is that correct?
There might still need to be some individual meetings, but the councillor's office will then. Uh, be able to prepare fewer options, um, uh, during that week. And so it should help them streamline their work, um, and help us in the final, um, decision-making process on the eighth.
I was sort of thinking belts and braces, everybody pick out some time, let's do the meeting on the second. And if you don't need the time with the councillor's office, just cancel.
Perfect.
Is that a friendly amendment, uh, Secretary Intagliata?
Uh, that would be a, a, a friendly amendment.
And it's accepted in the friendly manner in which it was offered.
Can the question be restated, please?
Uh, the que- uh, so the.
The motion.
The motion, the motion to be restated is that as a group, we meet at four thirty PM by Zoom. Um, for a special meeting on, uh, July the second. Uh, to preliminarily vet the, um, uh, recommendations, uh, comments, et cetera, that are made at our July the first meeting. Um, in order to provide guidance, uh, to the councillor's office for final drafting. Um, and to determine how many individual meetings might be necessary at that point for us to. Um, uh, meet our goal of, uh, of a July the eighth deadline for final votes.
And I believe the friendly amendment was that we proactively set up meetings between July, I guess, second and eighth. With, uh, commissioners. For purposes of refining any drafts that necessary and then cancel those if they become unnecessary.
Right.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Intagliata, I believe.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So, um, the motion has been made, uh, friendly amended and seconded. The, uh, uh, please say aye, uh, if in agreement, nay, if in opposition. Chair Bobo?
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Sheridan?
Aye.
Uh, Parliamentarian Garth? Mister Crossland?
Aye.
Commissioner Dwight?
Aye.
Commissioner Grant?
Aye.
Commissioner Nolan Echols?
Aye.
Commissioner Riley?
Aye.
Uh, Secretary Intagliata, aye. Uh, the ayes have it, Madam Chair.
Excellent. And I also see Commissioner Grant with the hand raised. Commissioner Grant, the floor is yours.
Like, I just had one more question for, um. Ms. Hamilton, which is when we vote on July eighth. And we say, um. You know, we, we as a board, uh, and I, I'm not saying when we're the, I don't, don't mean to predict what we're doing, but let's say we say. Uh, we vote, we want to put, uh, E and A heavy reform. The Department of Transportation mayoral appointments, revamp of city voting and modernize the charter language. All in an ordinance, and I, and I personally think it should be one ordinance, but, uh, to submit to. Uh, the Board of Aldermen by noon tomorrow. Is, is her office going to be able to put that together that quickly?
Hopefully we will have already put that together based on the motions that were just made.
Okay.
Uh. Director Ingrasia had a question in the chat.
Oh, are meetings virtual on seven two and seven eight? Yes. Any other questions or comments on this?
My hand is raised currently, should I just speak or lower my hand and re-raise it?
Um. I'll just recognize you, Commissioner Nolan Echols.
Thank you. On the recommendations, I recognize that certain or individual commissioners are listed as have drafted the language. Was that intentional? Was that the purpose of the draft being written? To my knowledge, the charter commission staff drafted the language. Did we? Change who wrote or how did we go about that process? Cause I'm looking at it and identifies specific commissioners. I believe we voted as a commission for particular recommendations. I'm happy to speak to that. Thank you. Uh, I believe, uh, Chair Bobo in her preliminary remarks about where we have been as a commission noted that on. June tenth, the commission voted to move forward seven priorities. And that after that, the city councillor's office met with the movements or the proponents of those particular recommendations. Um, to go over the draft and that the drafts were published, attached to a press release on Friday. So you should see, um, instead of the name of an individual commissioner on each draft. That it was dra- drafted by either, it's just a like charter commission staff or the city councillor's office as directed by Commissioner so-and-so.
Thank you. Commissioner Riley, I see your hand raised.
Yes, just to note that in the, I see, it's a Q and A section. And there are two comments, I'm guessing from the public, is my assumption, that, uh, come in throughout our conversation. Just want to note that.
Okay.
Yes, so, um. The, uh, the first question is. Can the public meeting on July first, I believe, be done at City Hall? That was certainly a consideration. Um, and we moved to other locations. That was certainly a consideration. Um, and we moved to other locations. Uh, the second one is could a simple poll of preliminary findings be done before July eighth? I I don't know of any way to contractor, get that in place or do it other than paid for by private funds. And if it's paid for by private funds, they can do whatever they want because they're private. So uh, but we don't have a way to publicly pay for that.
Thank you, Secretary Intagliata. Uh, are there any final thoughts or questions about our next uh stage of this process? Which would be the July eighth special meeting? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so our uh, oh, go ahead.
So for the July first public hearing, in person format, it'll be via, it'll be in person. But we're just going to read through the recommendations and just uh people stand and give feedback, breaking into groups as we did with our 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 former. Hearing, what would the actual agenda be for that night?
That's a good point. We did not discuss that during this, that section of today's agenda. Thinking. I found uh the way we structured it at the International Institute to be very useful. Uh, I felt like it was, it gave an opportunity for people to go from room to room uh or into different little sections and ask their questions as they. As they were interested and then we were able to reconvene. So I would, I would recommend that we. Share a similar structure or in- institute a similar structure at this next meeting. Commissioner Dwight, did you have any thoughts on that? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Uh, yeah, I think a a format like that would would definitely work for for getting input. Um. Yeah, uh, I think uh if we're trying to do a a lower lift version that still gives people chances to. Kind of dive deeper into uh different sections, then I think that would work. Um, as long as maybe there was a little bit more formality and how we kind of collected that feedback to be read back out to the full group. Um, especially since we're kind of needing to summarize and synthesize towards what those, if there are any changes. Um, so I think there's ways that we could kind of set that up together to really like prompt people to crystallize towards what what that change might be. Um, and and then be able to present that out and then have any full group discussion um before closing.
And I'm not sure if these venues that have been suggested will support breakout rooms like we had previously. So um, just keep that in mind as as you continue these discussions.
And I'm I've actually thinking we need, it's less necessary to have breakout rooms. Uh, I think we could just have different corners of the larger room uh where where smaller conversations are happening. So it's a bit more fluid and a bit more confined.
Right, so, okay, just one note of caution here. The um, there's thirteen days to pull together a meeting. I think that driving attendance is much more important than, there'll be plenty of feedback. But I think a general recitation of what we're talking about and then solicit feedback or. Send it out ahead of time. I'm not sure how you would divide up into seven. Corners of the room and then have an eighth corner for the things that we're sending over to consider. Uh, you would have to have some sort of, as Commissioner Dwight said, some sort of formal note-taking and feedback. I'm not sure who would staff or man each of those. It just seems like a lot of logistics to do in a very short period of time.
Commissioner, or sorry, Director Ingrascia, I see that you have your hand raised as well.
Thank you, Chair Bobo. Um, I just also wanted to raise when you're talking about the agenda. Um, since you're not at City Hall, there will not be an opportunity for people to participate virtually. Um, so you you might want to figure out um in a press release or anything that gets sent out about. Advertising about the June or, excuse me, July first meeting, um, other ways that people can engage if they're not able to make it that night.
What?
I thought we were going to be able to have STL TV there, Christine.
Um, STL TV can only allow people to testify virtually if they have the um technology that we have available at City Hall.
Okay, all right, but they'll be able to view the the hearing in real time.
Sure, they just wouldn't be able to provide feedback.
Yeah, got it. Very good.
Commissioner Crossland, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, um, to follow up on what Director Ingrascia was saying, is I've been listening to our comments about this final hearing. Um, to me at least, the most important thing is trying to be able to get maximum participation. And I'm not sure whether, you know, um, whether if we uh uh. Finding places, breaking out breakout sessions, all this kind of stuff. In the end, it has to do with with how many people we can get to a to a location. It's identifiable enough to them that they'll they'll show up. I'm I'm inclined to think that we should do it if it's available at the Kennedy Room. Because then we've got the technology that's available. As long as, here's my caveat, as long as there's not a sports event or something that's gonna create parking problems downtown. That City Hall is a is is a place that people know, it's where public transportation is. It's um, it's a, it's a, it's a location that um, uh, that uh, that that is um, uh, that that makes a lot of sense in terms of this final hearing. And um, and then we will be able to have the feedback um, uh, mechanism in place as well.
I think it's, I thi- I think it's really about the type of information that we're going to get. Um, if it's about like maximal receive, just all the comments kind of straight through. Then a hearing format works for that, but it puts a higher burden on needing to synthesize through what is. Meaningful, what the trends might be versus um, a breakout room format does have less of that kind of mass. Feedback method, but does allow for sometimes more meaning-making conversations. So I think it's a balance between the what what's most important to us at this moment.
I I agree with you, David. I guess what I'm concerned about is that these seven final recommendations have got a fair amount of overlap between them. And I'm not convinced that if we have these breakout sessions, they're not asking questions in one that are actually addressed in. In in another, um, et cetera. And so that that becomes, i- i- it seems to me that thematically, we might be better off trying to be able to. Pull those uh, those themes out and be able to um, uh, talk about the the issue of of. E and A at the large uh level with a with um, uh, controller and uh, um, uh. Public advocate, et cetera, and and kind of be able to 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 then be able to point out in these different um. Options uh of what's there uh and kind of paint a picture better than than if it's segmented. I'm worried that segmented, they're they're just gonna get a piece and it's not necessarily gonna make sense uh the the holistically. That I bow to you guys in terms of what you want to do.
Counselor Hamilton, I see your hand is raised as well. Thank you, Commissioner Crossland.
Yeah, just really quickly, uh, logistically, um. One thing that could work and be really, it would be really straightforward for staff, so I have to give a plug for it. Um, but understand if you decide to go in a different direction, of course, we'll follow your lead. Um, but if we just took comments in the order that speaker slips were submitted. Um, and then we also uh created a Google form for anyone who wanted to submit comments who cannot attend in person. That may be like just the most straightforward way to do it for the staff. I also, uh, my staff are sending me, of course, um, some notes regarding prior comment on location. And so just for clarity and for the completeness of the record of this meeting, I'm reading into the record our April first. Meeting minutes, page three, paragraph two, date as follows, Chair Nolan Echols moved that the next commission public hearing be held in June. At the Old Fallon Park YMCA, and after YMCA was not available, it be held at the Georgetown Community Center. Commissioner Intagliata seconded and um, the motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm uh, please.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair Sheridan.
Yeah, uh, that's okay. Uh, I think I'm leaning toward uh more of a a broader conversation as uh as one large group. Instead of breaking uh folks up into small groups, I again, I think uh counsel, uh. Counselor Hamilton brought up a a really good point about the ability to just collect slips and and collect these items uh as they are coming in. I also think there's a benefit of other uh other members of the public hearing at the same time what their peers and friends and others are saying. Uh, in the public. So I I think dividing up the the audience into smaller groups may be uh less effective, so.
Commissioner Nolan Echols.
Is there a way that we could use the format that was used at the last meeting with the polling? By way of the large group with the QR code of sorts to get the total public's opinion or perspective captured that way? Since the breakout sessions, groups or rooms or however, seeming to be a conflict?
Can I ask a point of clarification? Uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols, are you saying uh the the polling uh and surveying instrument? That we did in prioritizing at the last meeting, is that the one you're recommend, you're suggesting?
Yes.
And that, when would we do that for this public hearing? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, anywhere on the agenda where we were originally breaking out into the rooms, maybe in that section of the agenda. Allow the members of the public to scan a QR code that may be on the monitor screen. So I know that Julia Davis Library, for example, has the ability for the monitor uh projector. Where the QR code can be listed or we could have them printed on slips and passed out at the door. For the members of the public to contribute to what they believe we should concentrate on. Or what their opinions or perspectives are, just in a, just an option so that we could capture the total perspective. Of the public at the July first public hearing.
The the only concern I would have with that is that would then, it would almost, it would represent data that could be construed as a as a formal and scientific poll. Uh, and with a very small and unsci- uh, non-scientific sample size. I'd I'd be confused about that being extrapolated out by the general public as as being the direction that the that the general public wants the commission to go. But I like this idea of maybe using technology to solicit uh some engagement during during the meeting.
Counselor Hamilton, and then I'll go to Commissioner Crossland.
Just on the point of technology, the surveying tool that we used as we learned in the last meeting. Um, does not stop people from duplicating their responses.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioner Crossland?
Yeah, um, based on the uh attendance that we've had at the earlier events. Um, obviously, the people who come are the people who have, in some cases, a vested interest in one or another of the um. Of of the measures, uh, the possible amendments, et cetera. And so I'm not so sure how indicative they are of the public. There were a fair number of lobbyists, for instance, um, um, that were there for for different purposes, et cetera. And so um, so yes, I think it's great to ask them their opinion of certain kinds of things. But I would hate to see us voting and somehow or another um, uh, changing everything all around based on 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 the votes of these individuals. Because they're simply part of a of a big sample, the big sample of St. Louis, not necessarily um. Um, indicative of what, how St. Louis would feel about some of these issues. So just a thought.
Commissioner Nolan Echols.
I think because the public has requested and practically demanded that we figure out some way. To holistically engage them with this process. That it would behoove us to do so in every length on the July first meeting, in every way that we can and not. Do the latter, which is not include the public continually. And again, this is our last opportunity to make sure that the public. Feels and or thinks that they are being involved in this process. And so I would highly recommend us to make sure that we are doing that by all means in every way that we can.
Right, I I would agree. And I think having the public hearing uh and the opportunity for the public to make comments during that public hearing. Is is the, is the way that they are engaged. I think that uh, using a a piece of technology just to increase participation. Where the outcomes or the results are not really actionable or uh meaningful is, I think, does the public a disservice? And it does the commission a disservice. So I do agree with you that we need to find a way that during those publics, that during that public hearing. We pull as many voices in as possible. Uh, and I think that that's why having a Google form in advance for those that cannot participate. Uh, can can make their uh, make their voices heard. I just wanna make sure that we're not creating a statistical data point. That is meaningless, that somebody will take as having deeper meaning.
I would agree that the issue is with the data points. I'm okay with the data points being a problem. But if this is the case, then I would recommend that we do not put a time limit on the public comment section. Or that we bypass the public comment section altogether. Or any of those things that I've seen happen with the CD and public hearings before. So since we're not going to do some of these technology avenues. That we also not limit the public on their comment or put a timeframe on things as I've seen in the past.
Any other thoughts on this before we um? Or are there any motions related to what we've been discussing thus far? Commissioner Crossland? Oh, sorry.
Just a, just a final observation that one of the best ways to be able to reach the public. Um, I've seen the last month or six weeks is through neighborhood meetings. I think I've talked to well over a hundred people in different neighborhood meetings. And um, shared with them about the process and it's been an opportunity for them to be able to ask questions. And to learn a little bit more about the process in in depth. And um, and what I have found from it is they are very interested and very eager in actually knowing more. And being more engaged. And so um, and and and, but it's not necessarily about this this me- being present at the meeting itself. That's gonna, they want knowledge. And um, and that's where I think that uh if we talk about the eighth. And what maybe is an agenda item there is um, how do we then, once we've decided, once we've decided what, you know, what's gonna voted forward, uh, et cetera? You know, is there anything that we either informally, because we will have disbanded or et cetera, that we can do to help people really? Um, understand the what's behind this language? What do these amendments really say? How will they impact? Um, you know, what's the potential to impact how government operates and how might it affect their daily lives? Because right now it's just a jumble of of words. And um, and so we need to somehow or another help make that real to them. Because once it's real, then they they have a sense of how to be able to to actually take action and vote.
Um, I think Commissioner Dwight had his hand raised and then uh we can go. Commissioner Dwight, did you have your hand raised or wanted to chime in?
Yeah, it was, it was going to be uh not dissimilar from what Commissioner Crossland said, uh, just talking about. Um, education awareness portions of these. Um, and if that was going to be any component of. Um, of the first, I think the majority of the time should be spent on uh receiving testimonies or or answering questions. But I do think some kind of education about the parts of the proposal would be important. Because the the blurbs that are in that summary document are are in from the press release are are great. But I I think the the knowledge gap is is greater um for people. Um, and I think this is like a first chance to. Give a little bit more information about what exactly changes, the reasoning for that change and what the desired outcome from the changes. I think could set us up for stronger input from the public.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it makes sense um. To structure the meeting so that we spend a good chunk of time um discussing the proposals and the language, breaking it down. Uh, and then having, you know, maybe the second half uh solely dedicated to, you know, fielding public comment on what we've shared. Um, but I think it isn't in um, it's incumbent upon us to really share what we've gathered up to this point. Um, and I think to Commissioner Crossland's point, when I've gone to a few of the neighborhood meetings, people are interested, but they. Might need a little bit of a breakdown in terms of what, what we're actually proposing and why it matters or why we believe it matters. Um, and I think that And I think that that would still satisfy a couple of the things that we're discussing right now in terms of education awareness. Um, and then also hearing from those who this will impact. So just a, a recommendation, um.
Yeah, I, just to, uh, sorry, just to follow up one. I agree with what you said, Chair, and something that we talk about a lot with like messaging around, um, public campaigns and around, uh, social change is like, you're selling the brownie, not the recipe. And I'm, just to your point of like the why and, and what's the like direct outcome that we hope to seek from this, I think is important to focus around not just the, the recipe of the, you know, the technical details of it, which translate for a person understanding how it, how it's meant to be an improvement that impacts their lives.
Right, right. Uh, Commissioner Nolan Echols.
At the community meetings in which I've been to, a lot of the organizations have already begun to strategize and decide what recommendations that have been put forth that they support or are not in support of. More than half of them, I've participated with them in crafting or drafting or whatever that messaging is or is not. And what I would like for us to pay attention to is the fact that that process from the community perspective has already begun in pockets of the city related to whether or not they support the recommendations that have come by way of this commission along with the process. So I think at the public hearing, it really should be about how these recommendations impact the public and what they mean to the public, because we publicly decided that the public's perspective, opinions, recommendations that we read through were not necessarily what we were considering. So the impact of these recommendations on the public is what I think the public hearing for July first should be around.
Yes, thank you for supporting, uh, Commissioner Dwight, Crossland and myself in that point. Um, are there any further, um, points on this? Otherwise, our next agenda item is adjournment. Um, but I want to allow space if others want to chime in.
The document that was presented to us as a draft, what could be used to help message, uh, these amendments? Will that be revised in advance of the July first meeting? So we can also give that out to people to have something tangible to take with them to do what we're talking about tonight.
Say that one more time.
There's a document we were given at our, at our last meeting that talked about the history of this commission, our current process, how we've become to these uh, recommendations, what they are and how they impact the city. And that was going to be revised based upon what we were going to put forward.
Oh, like the handout?
That's the resourcing that we need for the community, which, which goes to great detail that we can do in an hour-long conversation, um, or meeting.
I'm not, I'm not sure what pamphlet you guys are, uh, talking about, but I, I want to mention that the, um, the press release with the attached draft might be of assistance in these, uh, meetings and, um, of course we can, oh, uh, and of course we can, um, provide you with copies of those if you would like.
I believe what, um, Commissioner Riley is referencing is, um, Benjamin Singer and his group provided, um, uh, just because they wanted to, I believe, and, and this is their specialty. Um, a pamphlet, I believe you were, um, out, or you were, you had dialed into the meeting, Counselor Hamilton, if I recall. But they had created a, uh, pamphlet, and I don't have it in front of me, but it was, it's maybe twenty pages.
Okay, I, I recall what you're talking about now.
Yeah, it's like a voter's guide or something like that. But at, at that point, he had mentioned something around, you know, i- if it needs to be updated, but I don't exactly recall what actions needed to be taken from us on that end, because it wasn't something that we contracted out or paid for. Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Tagliata, did you have a question about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think he'd be willing to revise it, uh, you know, I think that they probably going to need to revise it again after the board has done as a public education piece for a potential public campaign, but I certainly reach out to him and see if he's willing to do that. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not short on work to revise it in specific recommendations, but if he were, that'd be great.
Let's hear from other commissioners and then we can maybe decide, uh, our next plan of action. Commissioner Sheridan?
Yeah, for the, uh, for the public hearing, I like this idea of spending the, maybe the first half of the meeting uh, in an educational, uh, bent, is, would it be possible for a PowerPoint deck or some sort of presentation, presentation deck to be created, uh, and then either one commissioner presenting that, or the commissioners that are kind of, I won't use the word championing, but have been be, uh, but have been uh, deeply involved in the different recommendations, presenting their section, uh, just to bring kind of words to action and talk about, this is what the recommendation is, and here is how it impacts the citizenry and, in the, in the members of the St. Louis community. Is that a possibility? I know it's, that's, that's also a heavy ask, and I'm not sure who would take that on. I'm just thinking about if we're going to have an educational piece during this, uh, during this beginning part of the public hearing, it should, there should be something visual and something that's distilled down for the public to digest.
We're happy to help put together a PowerPoint if you would like.
Okay. And maybe, maybe that's, that's, you know, a, a, a good way to, um, perform that act of education, um, and, and awareness and describing things while also holding space for people to review things in a, in a way that is visual. Um, especially considering we're, you know, twelve, thirteen days away from the public hearing and it may be too big of an ask to ask Benjamin Singer, I, I'm not sure, but, um, Commissioner Inzaghiata, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I was, I was, it, I, I think it probably is, he may be willing to do it, but, uh, you know, the, um, what I was going to say about the PowerPoint presentation is I would encourage you, Chair Bobo, to be the spokesperson or the charter commission, if you were willing to do it. I, I think you'd be excellent at presenting in a very fair and even way, the various recommendations that we made.
I will gladly do that, and thank you for the compliment. Director Ingracia, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, on the show me integrity piece, uh, if you do indeed decide to request that show me integrity move forward with updating the pamphlet that was sent to you last time, I would encourage you to be sure to review it before it gets disseminated to the public and also um, make sure that the public knows it was not something that was created internally, um, at the city or by the commissioners themselves.
That's part of, thank you for mentioning that, Christine. I think that's the other part. I think that some of it is not ready for wide dispersion, quite frankly.
Commissioner Crossland?
Um, I was just gonna, uh, note a couple of things. One is that I had been using, but it's out of date now, a document that the city councillor's office produced much earlier in the process. It was like a, a, a kind of a introduction of the, um, of the, uh, charter commission stuff, and I think it had, you know, our names and, you know, positions and all that kind of stuff within it. And if we're going to continue to use that for some kind of outreach, it will need to get updated because it's, um, it's, it's not current right now. Um, the second thing that I just want to, I, 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 I concur that, um, that you as chair, um, Chair Bobo should be the speaker and, and the introducer. I would recommend that there be two approaches to the knowledge building that are, that, that kind of are, 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 are included within that process. And one is, you know, the Bing Bing Bing, one through seven, this is the key points. This is how it'll impact your lives, et cetera. And then there's kind of like a, a together, a, a, an encapsulation statement, or whatever you want to call it, where you bring it all together. And you talk about how they relate to each other, so that people don't get the idea that they might just be able to support one, two and four, for instance. But that there's a package there and there's a rationale for the package, you know? That it isn't just that these are seven discrete items, but that they, they together create the better government that, um, um, that we really are, are aiming to, to try to be able to, to have.
So how about this? I'll take that as an action item, um, to work alongside the city councillor's office and the charter commission staff to develop a PowerPoint, um, that does tie in what you've just mentioned. Obviously goes over the seven that we've, uh, agreed upon, but also kind of, uh, creates a roadmap of how they're interrelated. Sound okay?
Great, that's perfect.
Any other thoughts or questions about this? If not, the next agenda item is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Bye, thank you all.